For the pledge of grable.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
City assessor?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings we have done. Citizens comment on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items. You'd limit your comments to five minutes and please speak into the podium. People having trouble or speaking in the microphone or people having trouble hearing. Anybody would like to have any comments on agenda-related items? Please state your name and address.
Fred Niles, 12 Pining Road, Manistee. I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors of the Manistee Golf and Country Club and I'm here on the club's behalf. The issue is erosion, which I believe is right on the agenda. I understand the city is in the process of at least considering applying for help from the state and federal governments with regards to the erosion issue. I am here to go on the record in stating that the Manistee Golf and Country Club is open to the public and is a business within the city. Because of its historic nature and the fact that it is located on the shore, the club attracts a significant number of visitors to the city. Six holes on the course go out to or come back from the bluff. We are experiencing significant damage to one of our greens, number fourteen, which is our signature hole, and others are being adversely impacted by erosion issues. I simply ask that should the city receive financial help from either the state or federal governments, that the Manistee Golf and Country Club be included in any consideration for reclamation projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by this manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do. I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, adding chapter ten sixty-four, charge for fire runs and emergency services. The public safety director has requested a new cost recovery ordinance. The new ordinance would authorize the recovery of certain costs for fire runs and emergency services as authorized by the Michigan Complied Law forty-one point eight zero six A, to provide for the collection of charges, to provide for exemptions, and to repeal all ordinances in conflict. City council reviewed the proposed ordinance at their work session on November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, chapter ten sixty-four, for fire runs and emergency services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion?
Chief Cozwell, this, if I am, if I read this correctly, there would not be any fees assessed to residents of the city of Manistee for normal fire and health runs to their homes. Is that correct?
Correct. There is that one provision for the, I think it's three times within a month. Well, that's, as I think I indicated in the work session, that's more for a situation where we're responding to alarms within the city.
False alarms.
Yes, that aren't being corrected.
Correct. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick? Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing twenty-twenty poverty exemption guidelines and new federal income guidelines as approved by the state tax commission. The adoption of a resolution establishing poverty exemption guidelines for exemption for property tax contributions required in order for the board review to grant property exemptions. The homestead of a person who the board reviews determines the reason for poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemption in whole or in part from taxation under Public Act three ninety, nineteen ninety-four. The state tax commission requires that the city of Manistee adopt this resolution each year and approve the income guidelines adopted by the state tax commission. The resolution states we use the federal income guidelines and we substanti- which is substantially the same as last year's resolution. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establish- establishing twenty-twenty poverty exemption guidelines. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make the comment that I, they've been, they have been decreased a little bit over the last couple of years, so that's a good thing, I think. That's about it.
Anything else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of increasing the number of marijuana grow licenses in the city. The city currently allows twelve medical marijuana and twelve retail marijuana grow licenses. Given the interest expressed by entities wishing to obtain grow licenses, there may be a insignificant number to grow, of grow licenses available. Staff is recommending the city allow an unlimited number of medical and recreational marijuana grow licenses. Mr. Taylor, would you be able to explain, before we get into the motion, explains the reasoning for this?
Sure. We've got a couple of maps that I wanted to show too. Currently, there's three areas in the city that is allowed by ordinance to grow marijuana. One of them is the Peninsula District, and the yellow cross-hatched properties are ones that are vacant and may be eligible. The two closest to thirty-one along the river, those are consumers' power property, and they're doing mitigation work there. I don't know, you know, if they would be able to be developed and if they were, what restrictions. So, we're not really certain if those would even be available. And then, that larger parcel, we just don't know. But those are the only ones that are available in that district that might even come to, come into play. Iron Works is already in there that's been purchased with the intent for a grow operation. In previous conversations with one of the principals in that project, he said he wanted all the grow licenses we have. So, they got a large area there that they could grow in. So, I don't, you know, I don't know. Talk's cheap, but that's what he told me. So, there's just a few parcels in the Peninsula District that would really be eligible. Do we have the next one?
The next man?
Yeah. This is in the light industrial, or the general industrial district. And if you can see on the inset map, it's that purple is that, is the district, the light purple. And these cross-hatched are the only ones that we're aware of that are, that might be available. And they're in a, in a general industrial district. So, there's, you know, just a few parcels there. Some of them are quite large, but there's just a few. And then, the other area that we allow it is in our city industrial park on the north end of town, and that, if you look at the inset map, it's that dark purple at the top. There's no available parcels there. There are two parcels that were purchased probably a year and a half, two years ago, with the intent to do a grow operation there. And in talking with the new owner of that property, his companies or company has received both a medical provisioning license and a retail, or recreational marijuana retailer. And he's planning on developing that into grow. So, in essence, there's very few parcels that really could be available. And if they would be available, we don't know. But staff is recommending an unlimited number of grow licenses and let the available parcels be the limiting factor. What we looked at it is it's, we think it's not going to be an obtrusive use in the city. It's just going to, it's going to be all enclosed within a building, and there's not going to be people coming and going other than employees. From what we've learned from the people that are going to get into the business, they're well-paying jobs, fifteen dollars an hour and up. So, that's great. And it's just another economic development opportunity for the, for the city that able to, to provide some good jobs, just overall employment. It's really not going to interfere with the community, given the locations. And so, that's why we're recommending unlimited number of grow licenses and let the limiting factor be the parcels.
Where is this Luger Road? Number one.
No idea. Luger's, I think that, that's that small road. We don't normally have, Jeff, do you? County, I will defer, the county planning put that together, so I don't know if they were cutting and pasting or not, but.
It's always one street I haven't seen in years.
Well, if you don't know where it is, I certainly don't. But the, the Tenth Street property, that's already been, you know, there's one there that's allowed, so very, very few parcels available. So, Mr. Taylor, currently, how many grow licenses has the city authorized? None. We haven't, we have one going through, the Iron Works is going through right now, and that's the one that said, and again, this goes back a few months, that they wanted all of our grow licenses. And they're working through the site plan process with the planning, planning department to get that ready and teed up for the planning commission. I do know that the one at the end of Tenth Street, they are proceeding. They haven't indicated how many they're going to get. The, the parcels in the industrial park on the north end of town, the initial plans were to build six twenty thousand square foot buildings to grow in. So, that's going to take quite a few. So, there's, there's an interest. There's no doubts.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? At this time, council could take action to amend the appropriate ordinance to allow for an unlimited number of medical recreational grow licenses in the city. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting a declaration of shoreline disaster resolution. The city of Manistee has experienced considerable shoreline erosion and property damage due to high water levels in the Great Lakes. The level in the Great Lakes are forecasted to increase in twenty-twenty, and the erosion and damage will continue. The city needs the assistance of the state of Michigan and the federal government to help with shoreline erosion migration efforts. At this time, council could take action to adopt a declaration of shoreline disaster request resolution and ask that the state of Michigan declare the shoreline of Michigan as a disaster area and request the assistance from the federal government. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Happened to run into somebody who lives on Doones Drive. And as you know, if you own a house on Doones Drive, there's a strip of land in front of it that's been, you know, that belonged to the city. Well, it's all underwater now. So, of course, the question is, people who are used to walking the beach, are they going to be walking then on private property since the public part of it is now underwater? So, it's just another, you know, kind of kink in this whole process when we talk about erosion and what's happening.
Mm-hmm.
So, I thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Anything else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a change to the schedule of fees. The city council approves the schedule of fees with approval of the annual budget. The current schedule of fees does not include the fee for making a permit request to the Historical District Commission. It is being proposed that the fee for the permit request to the Historical District Commission be established at fifty dollars. The current schedule of fees does not include specific fines for misdemeanor offenses under the city ordinance, and the request is that the fines be established at not less than two hundred and fifty dollars or more than five hundred dollars for each offense. Also, the city has taken, the city has retaken the responsibility of electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspection, building inspection, and plan reviews through SafeBilt, but does not have an established fee schedule for those services. It's being proposed that the fees identified in the attached, attachment to the city attorney memo be adopted as the fees to be charged in connection with the services identified. At this time, council could take action to amend the schedule of fees to establish a fee for a request for permits to the Historical District Commission, Historical District Commission. Establish a minimum and maximum fine for misdemeanor ordinance violations and establish the fees associated with the inspection services to be performed by SafeBilt as set forth in the city attorney's memo to council. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have a question on the fines. What has been the, the average fine given by the courts for misdemeanors in, in Manistee? You know, I, I don't think I can say an average. There are standard fines for certain offenses such as drunk driving. I mean, those fines are pretty well uniformed, depending on whether it's a first offense and impaired offense. For the others, there really isn't anything specific. It kind of depends on the particular crime and the culpability may be of the defendant. But our fine, our ordinance reads that the fine would not be more than five hundred dollars, but would be established from time to time by council, and we've never really established what that was. And so, my suggestion is it can't be more than five hundred dollars, but two fifty would be a good minimum. The way I see the court ordering fines, rarely would they assess a fine that was less than two hundred and fifty anyway. And that's kind of what I was getting at. When, when they are assessing fines, is it fifty dollars or is it more towards five hundred? You're saying it's probably close to the two hundred and fifty dollar. Two hundred and fifty to five hundred, and, and drinking and driving offenses, you know, people don't know this, but first time drunk driving is going to be over a thousand dollars in fines costs and the various other charges, so. And the other question was the, the fees that we're using for the building codes and assessments? Or is that, that's part of this, right?
Yes.
Are, are those similar to what the state has been currently charging? Are, are higher or lower? They're the same. The same? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Notices, communications, and announcements. Presentation of Project Rising Tide wrap-up.
Good evening, council. All right. Thank you very much for having me. This will be my, probably not the last time you see me, but very much the last presentation as it relates to Project Rising Tide. Incredible that it's been a year already. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the summary of Rising Tide, what it is, the priority projects that we worked in Manistee, some of our events and engagement, the wins in our local successes, the challenges, recommendations, and then remarks of my time here. Feel free to, you know, stop me in the middle of the presentation. If not, I'll take your questions by the end of it. So, just really quick, just as you know, Project Rising Tide is a state initiative that kind of works with communities that have a lot of potential for development. And then, it's a joint effort between the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Talent and Investment Agents that is, agency that is now part of the Labor and Economic Opportunity Department, MISHDA, and then the Talent and Economic Development that again turned into Leo, as it's called right now. As you know, each, one community is selected from the ten Michigan prosperity regions, and then the state looked at poverty, unemployment level, participation, rent or occupancy, housing vacancy rates, and then households receiving assistance to select the communities that were part of the program. Manistee started participating in the program as part of round two. As you can see in the screen, there is a bunch of communities that have gone through the process from twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And then, Manistee started participating between August twenty eighteen and then it really officially launched December tenth of twenty eighteen, which is when I started here. Just a little bit of background of how I came up to serve the city of Manistee. So, learning experience from the first communities that participated in the program was that a lot of the work that had to be done was not being able to be carried out, but most of the employees were just the regular day-to-day work. So, they decided to hire ten fellows or consultants independently to work with the cities, and that's how you welcomed me to your community last December. So, just some key data that I've been working with. I feel that having the data of the community, it's an important way to understand the situation that we're at and kind of the challenges that we're facing. The population of Manistee right now is sixty-two hundred and one. Our aver- average household income is fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven compared to the Michigan averages, you know, there's a significant difference. Although our population is sixty-two hundred people, only forty-four percent of our population is in the labor, in the workforce right now. And then, we have forty-one percent of our housing that was built before, before nineteen forty. And I put that out there because housing, as you know, it's not the first time you hear it. It's also one of those things that we focused a lot for the year. So, before I talk to you about the projects that you are already familiar with that we, we started at Manistee, all of these projects were selected by a steering committee. Each participating community was asked to form a committee of each of their leading organizations or employers to identify what were the key issues or barriers keeping the community from growing or developing. Here, we had a fantastic group of leaders that worked with us. We had the city of Manistee, the city manager, we had the mayor, we had the Manistee County Chair, the largest employers like Monson Healthcare Hospital, Blarney Castle, Little Riverbound Devota with Indians, the planning, the planning department, West Shore Community College, the intermediate school district, and the downtown development authority. I, until today, I'm pretty impressed of the work we got together and how amazing it was that the projects that they selected were generally the most fitting to the needs of the community. So, along the lines of, you know, employers and leading organizations and people that represent the community, they decided that they wanted to focus the technical assistance of the project in four specific initiatives. So, one was the economic development plan to kind of narrow down all of the efforts community-wide. Manistee's, you know, it's considerably small communities, but we had a lot of organizations working separately and then not engaging altogether to, towards a common goal. Developing a housing action plan to identify the challenges and barriers that the community faces and how can we find sustainable solutions for it? A branding and marketing that you've all been really engaged with, which is to kind of renew the image of the community and support the economic development efforts. And then, the fourth one, which is support training component to improve collaboration and communication in community organizations. So, across the year, I worked with the city in a very engaged, great relationship. We held three community events and three surveys. We had over four hundred people that engaged with the project with me. We had the Economic Development Summit at the Book Theater by February that kind of worked with the community members to engage them in the process and also identify what were the biggest challenges and opportunities for Manistee. We had a, a class with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation here at the city hall to talk about the incentives and how can we encourage people to do reinvestment and rehabilitation of our downtown. We had a presentation of the economic development strategy here at the city hall as well. We held the branding survey who, that had two hundred and nine responses. The branding focus groups that we did with different community members and local organizations. The housing forum to talk about the barriers and those challenges for housing and how can we find solutions for them. Recently, we held that land bank authority workshop with our local land bank to kind of engage in the resources and opportunities for housing through the county land bank and the state of Michigan Land Bank Authority. The Young Professionals Housing Survey, which most of you are familiar with. The employer focus groups to talk about those local challenges and how can the city support the employers as well. The branding reveal that happened at the city municipal marina. And then, the MISHDA tools and resources where MISHDA came to talk about, you know, loans and available programs for housing in Manistee. And then, I don't know why I wrote housing survey twice, but yeah. Sorry about that. These are some of the, the findings from the presentation at the Economic Development Summit in February. I still think that this is a really big, powerful image to kind of put us in the groundwater, the pressing things that our community thinks that matter for everyone. As you know, when I put this across the board, that our strengths are the natural resources, the Ramsdale Theater and the Book Theater. Weaknesses, it was still, still the same impressive to me that lack of community collaboration was recognized by the at-large community as one of the weaknesses that Manistee has. Opportunities are affordable housing and then the support for small business development, and then, and the threats, we got back again to housing and negativity. I got to tell you that we have done an amazing amount of work this year to kind of tackle the things that the community recognized in February. I feel that the engagement we've had and kind of the leadership has shown a lot of, you know, reflection of how they care about these things that the community recognized. So, as far as the completed initiatives, as stated by the steering committee and the community at the beginning, we did develop the economic development strategy, which is what the Chamber of Commerce is currently using and their economic development director to kind of guide the local efforts for economic development. We also completed the branding toolbox, which the city is, you know, successfully adopting into moving into the, accepting the new brand. We completed the housing action plan. I'm currently working with the city manager and other community organizations to find some sustainability as far as solutions and kind of taking action on the recommendations from the housing action plan. And then, we also proposed some recommendations for the zoning ordinances of the city of Manistee. Some specific recommendations that kind of limit or at least make the process of housing development a little bit more complicated in the city. The planning commission is already, you know, reviewing these recommendations, and I'm, as far as Rob Carsa notified me, they should be coming sometime to all of you and by the end of the winter of next year to make those zoning changes. As you know, this is the branding and image that, you know, that came as a result of the focus groups, the survey, and kind of the community communication. I wanted to spend some time talking about the projects that I have been engaged with in serving the city, which is working with the county planning department into maintaining the Michigan Economic Development- working with the county planning department into maintaining the Michigan Economic Development, redevelopment-ready certification for the city. I work with the sites, the economic development strategy, the marketing strategy, and then the overall process to make sure the city continues to maintain the certification. I also work with the Chamber of Commerce with, with a program called the Site Red- Redness Program for specifically the Manistee Renaissance Park. We did a pretty impressive presentation in Traverse City to kind of showcase the Renaissance Park as a key place for investment and kind of get it, get us out there to try to get people or organizations or industries that would come and serve or, or be in the industrial park. Oh, sorry, the Renaissance Park. A big win for this year for Manistee was the approval of the Hillcrest Apartments. Although they haven't started and it's not an immediate solution to the housing limitations in Manistee, this is a big deal for the community and the needs. Hiring an economic development director is also a reflection of the engagement of the community to, you know, take action in their own hands. I do feel that there has been a lot of community buy-in and awareness of these are these issues, but how do we work together to solve them? I also hosted with the, our economic development director, a lenders discussion. So talking to all of our local banks and credit unions to try to find solutions or tailored products for the average median income in Manistee and the housing. The adoption of the Rising Tide Economic Development Strategy by the city and the chamber. I also completed an application on behalf of the Downtown Development Authority for the AARP Grant Community Challenge and then the Michigan Strategic Fund Grant Application. The latter one was granted, but because of the budget cuts and the, you know, sort of the issues we've been having at the state level with the budget, I haven't received notice of the disbursement of this, I hope they will, but I guess we'll know more next year. The adoption of the recommendations for the zoning changes for housing and then the adoption of the branding toolbox. This is a very new concept, probably one of the things that I'm most proud of, out of the project in general. So as you saw at the beginning, the community recognized that Manistee has a lack of collaboration, a lack of a unified vision, and a lot of negativity. All of your leaders this year came together to form what is Manistee Forward. Mark Miller, who's also the Economic Development Director, is the one leading this group. And they have been meeting every month to not only go through the recommendations of Rising Tide, but also discuss what are pressing issues between each organization. Manistee's Forward has the county, the city of Manistee, the Manistee County Visitors Bureau, the intermediate school district, the Ramsill Theater, the Community Foundation. Basically, most of the organizations that were involved at the steering committee are now permanently meeting to talk about community issues and then opportunities for collaboration. Ideally, this is what's going to bring the sustainability of the recommendations of the project moving forward. So far, we've had three meetings? Two? Okay. So far, we've had two meetings to kind of not only talk about the Rising Tide deliverables, but also how can our local organizations continuously communicate and progressively develop better relationships between each other. As unfortunate as it sounds, the project I, I did within my time here obviously was able to face some challenges that the community faces. Again, we've done a lot of great work, but there's still a lot more work to do. Manistee has a lack of capacity. I feel that there's very little people carrying a lot of weight for the concerns and issues of the community. We have a lot of employees that are overtasked with, you know, being in a board or serving or assisting another organization. It is a very hard issue to tackle, but one of those things that could help is kind of the same dynamic you guys have with the Chamber of Commerce of having a shared asset for economic development or having a shared asset for county planning and zoning. It's kind of a good model that works for the city of Manistee. Some of the conversations we're having right now is having a similar thing to tackle the housing for the community. And then, and that is also housing, housing is one of the biggest constraints in the community as far as economic and community development. As you saw it in the Young Professionals Housing Survey, it's really hard to move into Manistee for the first time, it's really hard to find a moving-ready property that doesn't cost, you know, fifteen-hundred dollars for your regular person. This is the biggest challenge of all, it's a bit of a catch-22, but the community is highly affected by the declining population. This has been slamming Manistee for the last five years probably, as far as the data says. The economic development strategy does propose like a population recruitment campaign. It's one of those tasks that Manistee Forward will have to explore for next year. This one is reluctant to invest, so this is specifically to kind of focusing our investment and interest in smaller, more impactful projects. Like I, through my time here, I know that the streets are a big concern, there's a lot of big problems that are affecting our community, but how can we, you know, focus in smaller projects that may need more immediate attention to make sure we continue growing together? Or that support the efforts for economic development. There is a lack of capacity twice, apparently. There's the collaboration, so it has been a good experience this year, but there is still a lot of pressing issues in between, in between collaborations for the city, the Downtown Development Authority. I, I, I think it was a lot more explicit than I thought it would be in the report. There is a lack of recognition and a lot of connection between the city and the DDA. I feel that that relationship could be a lot better and then we could be achieving things a lot faster if that relationship was better. I feel that there is an increased level of awareness of the impact of this disconnect at this point. But the more that we work to get that corrected or at least improving for the years, the more, the more things we could see for the downtown and for the city altogether. And then the last one is board rotations. The city is constantly looking for people to be in boards and commissions. You know, we could have a more active role about that because we have some people that are not engaged currently that are five, two, three years within their same seat, probably not aware of the decisions that they're making and constraining development efforts, so that's something that could be looked forward for next year, having a more proactive outlook for more people to get engaged in our local boards and commissions. As far as the sustainability and the implementation, this is probably the biggest part of this whole initiative that's basically what I've had to report back to the state too. How do we make sure that the communities are responding and are using the technical assistance provided? Manistee Forward is going to be the main lead of this. We have Mark, who has kindly volunteered to carry the efforts forward, but a lot of it is going to be community commitment and the, the commitment of all, all of our leaders to make sure they happen. There is a transition plan that I work with, with the city of Manistee, also a transition plan for the Downtown Development Authority that talks about that shared contract with the Chamber Economic Development for services for the DDA and most of the other recommendations provided. The awareness and communication, continue to keep up with the, you know, communication across the organizations, the DDA, the city, the chamber. The board training, that it was supposed to happen this year, it's now on the works to get scheduled for January twenty-twenty. I feel that if we could also get a refreshment on what are everyone's roles and responsibilities serving the community, it's a little easier to understand where we're going. And then hopefully, we will lead somewhere with the discussion of the housing staff, having a person that will be fully dedicated and finding resources, grants, and kind of working with the community to tackle the challenges and barriers for the housing in Manistee. As far as the key recommendations, I would say the placemaking and downtown revitalization are some, one of the most important things in here. Manistee has a fantastic downtown district, and there are a lot of opportunities there to continue working with, revitalizing it. Addressing the capacity gap for housing and then strengthening Manistee Forward, making sure that it continues working and, you know, that it's sustainable. And then a continuous focus in, you know, enhancing the communication and the collaboration locally. And then, this is just a little word of inspiration, that there is no power for change greater than our community discovering what it cares about. Clearly, this year was a great reflection of how mo- how much all of you care. I've had a great response, all of you have been so amazing to me. I'm not gonna cry, but it's been a, an amazing year, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
Just a statement.
Oh.
You will be missed.
Thank you. Well, I'll still be living in Manistee until March, and then I'm gonna, I'm going to the Dominican Republic, so.
Somewhere warmer?
Yeah. But you can still catch me until March. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Lizette, Lizette, can you give me that controller?
Yes.
Thank you. This, we're gonna do a consideration of a resolution to thank, of thanks and appreciation. Lizette Reyes ends her project Rising Tide fellowship on December twentieth, twenty-nineteen. Lizette has served our community in exemplary fashion and helped move the initiatives established by Project Rising Tide Steering Committee forward. In recognition of our efforts, a resolution of thanks and appreciation is offered. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation for Project Rising Tide fellow Lizette Reyes. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, please take the role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick? Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. A report from the city manager. At a regular part of each meeting, we have, we have a cooperating agency, organization department, tonight the city manager gets to talk.
This is our, my year-end report to the city and, and as I said in my statement in the highlights document, you know, everybody that's working for the city is, is really driven and we're always looking forward and trying to get this project done, that project done, and what can we do? And we, we never take enough time, in my estimation, to sit back and reflect on where we've been. So this is why I like this format, is we get to highlight what we've accomplished in this year, and I think that's really important because sometimes we get frustrated that we haven't done that yet or we're not on to that yet, but if we keep it in perspective and take a look at what we've done, which is a lot, it helps. So in my, manager's department is myself, Cindy, for two more days. She's gonna be retiring after forty-five years, and then Kelly McCole is taking that job. And she'll be on her own after Friday. Our primary responsibility is efficient day-to-day operations, also deal with council agendas, contract negotiation, citizen communication, strategic planning, and council goals. So, in the highlight, it's broken down into a message from myself, then we go into construction governance, community economic development operations, and then finally the directory of officials. Some of the things that I pulled out of the highlight that I wanted to just focus on tonight is in our current fiscal year budget, we published that on the twenty-eighth of March, we had several work sessions and public hearings, finally led to an adoption of a budget in May that was roughly six-point-three million dollars in our general fund. We're again, proud of, I believe this is the third year that we've balanced our budget without using our fund balance, so we're, we're proud of that. In fact, we, this year, we, this last fiscal year, we increased our fund balance by a hun- a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars. We've, we've had no millage rate increase, and we're continuing to adjust our water and sewer bills by three-and-a-half percent based on the recommendations. Construction projects, rural development projects phase one and two, we've heard a lot about that, we continue to plug away at it. We completed a reconstruction of Twelfth Street from Maple to US thirty-one. We're still working on our sanitary sewer overflow and, and ionized reduction. We did pilot slip linings. We repaired our docks that were damaged by the sage. We had a significant collapse of our sanitary sewer line on thirty-one. And we also had some emergency repairs to a pump station. There's a picture of the magnitude of the break. DPW did a heck of a job with the contractors and getting this taken care of. I'm still amazed they, they got it done that quick. There's pictures of Twelfth Street, I think it looks beautiful. It's a real, I think it's gonna benefit the community for a number of years. In, in, in terms of a governance, governance, we've with a, a council support, established a pilot for the Hollander Development of the Hillcrest Apartments. Second year that the city participate in the Chamber's Business Expo, just another way to get us out there and engage with the community. The mayor and I attend the local government meetings that are held monthly. We created an ad hoc refuse, refuse committee to talk about how we can handle trash and trash pickups. Working with the chair of the county commission on investigating whether we have, can get any traction on relocating the railroad. And then, just recently renewed our agreement with the intergovernmental agreement with the schools for the paint pool. In terms of community development, we heard a great presentation from Project Rising Tide. That's, that's been a godsend to this community this past year, and especially having someone the caliber of Lizette to help us move those initiatives forward. We'll be working, next year, we've started doing a little work on our REAC certification for a redevelopment-ready community. We again receive grant dollars from the local revenue sharing board, and we're almost at one-point-three-million dollars in grants received from that board. This year, we also established an IFT for Fab Light for twelve years, which resulted in them doubling the size of their facility. They're looking at twelve jobs initially in the, in the first three years and looking at upwards of thirty in, in, during the IFT. And we entered into an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services. Something to be proud of, we have a great partnership of public and private entities that have put their money out and said we need to do something. So, that's really encouraging, as Lizette said earlier, you know, that we got people that are interested in making something happen in this community, so we should be thankful for that. Continue with community development, there's a number of new businesses that opened, you can see those, some of them are brick and mortar, there's a couple of food trucks in there, but that's a good indicator that people are still interested in investing in the community. In operations, we had another annual recycling event with Republic Waste, this time we focused on electronic waste. Internally, staff instituted a working holiday concept, we found two holidays that we were open, but the county facilities weren't. So we thought, well, probably the community doesn't expect us to be open, so we still work, but we do different tasks. This past year, a lot of it was just, you know, it might be email management, file management, it might be cleaning the buildings, a number of different things. This year, we're gonna be focusing on, on training, we're gonna go through our harassment policies and refresh that with our staff, we're gonna go through CPR training, AED, and some other things. So we'll have two days of those. We updated and adopted our personnel policies and procedure man- manual, signed an agreement with SafeBill that effective January first, we're gonna be doing our building official responsibilities, taking it back from the state. Think that's gonna be a significant increase in the level of service to our community. Secondarily, it's going to give us better information for the assessor to keep those, all those property cards current. And then finally, we have a slight revenue stream increase because we'll be getting twenty percent of the permit fees, the other eighty will go to SafeBill. It's not a lot, but it's something. We're moving our recycling center to Manistee Catholic Central. Again, and I think a great public-private or private-private, public-public partnership. What we, what we're gonna realize from that is that we're going to reduce our cost to pull our fiber by fourteen thousand a year, that's what it costs us, to get rid of the fiber. In turn, when we take our recycling up to Manistee Catholic Central, we'll direct all of the recycle, recyclers in town to take their fiber and put them in their trailers, at the trailer at MCC. So they'll realize a revenue stream that they didn't have before, or a greater revenue stream. And we'll just have our co-mingled dumpster up there on a, on a cement pad that we've, or concrete pad that we've poured. And we'll just have our co-mingled dumpster up there on a, on a cement pad that we've, or concrete pad that we've poured. And we're looking to, to see that as a great partnership. Our fire station was recognized by the Guinness Book of World Records. We've done a number of technology updates. Council's got all-new iPads, lucidity software for the utilities. Initial indications that's, that's gonna be a great asset for our staff. So those are just the highlights of the highlights, and if council has any questions, certainly entertain those.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Yeah. When is Mr. Hollander gonna start on these Hillcrest Apartments?
I don't have a definite time. What, the last I talked with him is they had put it out for bids. It came in higher than they anticipated. So they were looking, they were gonna do two things. Look at another construction firm to see if they can get a better bid, and then possibly at the same time work with the planning department to see if there's some modifications to the site plan that they can make that, that will help reduce the cost. So, he's still moving forward. He's very positive. He's got his, you know, financing in place. It's just, he's not gonna close until he gets those costs in line.
Anything else?
What about, Merrick, now they put that piece of plywood across, I think I asked this at the last meeting, and I don't know if they're working inside, but are we doing anything? I mean, DDA's gonna let them beat us next June?
I, I rather doubt it. We're gonna have a better handle on it after the first year with SafeBill, when we can go down there and get their opinion on, you know, do they have a, number one, do they have a permit? Are they following the building permit? You know, how do they stack up with the building code?
Anything else?
I got a question for Jeff. Jeff, when can we get that couch removed from Maple Street, just, just by Ninth Street there? The couch has been out there for like, what, three weeks now?
I believe we sent them a letter, so I'll.
Sent them a letter? All right. Can we find him or something?
Well, typically, we send them a letter, give them a period of time. If they don't remove it, then we.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, then we hire Republic and then build them back for.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? See nothing, moving along to a consideration of a resolution of thanks and appreciation. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation for returning Executive Secretary Sidney Lockovich. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion on behalf of Sidney Lockovich.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any comments? Just have one. Thank you. I'll thank Cindy for years and years of work. It's gonna be, gonna be kind of strange.
It is. It's gonna be, first of all, she's very good at her job. Selfishly, that's forty-five years of institutional knowledge, walking out the door. That, that's really hard to, obviously, to replace. She's been a good face for the, for the city for a number of years. So, just a reminder that we're having a little get-together for her on the twenty-seventh, from two-thirty to four-thirty here in council chambers. Come up and get a chance to say goodbye, if you have a chance.
You do have her on speed dial, right?
Yes, and I know where she lives. We can find her.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any other, any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. Concerns and comments? This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens unattended shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read, will not be publicly read. Do we have any one that would like to make a comment tonight? Hello?
Hi, there. My name is Tom Vokum. I'm the president of Salt City Rockin' Blues, a five oh and C three nonprofit organization. In the past, we raised monies during concerts during the Fourth of July that we repainted, helped finance the repainting of the lighthouse. We donated money to Homer Bound. Now, we started a new festival, Labor Fest, and last, well, this year actually it was. And we had a success, and our goal is to build a, help fund an amphitheater down in First Street Beach area. And at this time, we'd like to, our group would like to present to Mayor Manassas and city manager a check for ten thousand dollars for the feasibility study.
Please, come on. Good night.
I'm gonna take the photographs, so you can all have to.
Take the photograph. Take the photograph.
Selfies or?
Anybody else? Anybody else with a ten thousand dollar check? Okay. Officials and staff, Mr. Taylor, anything else?
Nothing more.
Mr. Setler?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City clerk?
No, nothing.
Mr. Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Let's see, who else do we have back there? Oh, we have the city engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
I have something. Are we on schedule? Yes or no?
Yes, but the design instructions to be determined.
Okay. How about, Mr. McCullough?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety.
I don't have any checks, but, sit down. Good one. I'll bring it right back in. As everybody knows, we've, Sunday morning arrested the subject that was involved in our Larsen Farm Autos that we had over the last couple of weeks, responsible for over a hundred of them. This is just my pitch again to remind everybody to please lock your cars, believe anything, that'll be a bling. It was all just crime of opportunity for this young person, so. We're working feverishly, returning a lot of items right now. We have a lot of people coming forwards. Just encourage people to please lock their cars. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Lizette, do you have anything further?
No, I am all good, thank you.
You're gonna be missed, believe me.
Um, I just wanna thank the group for the ten thousand. That's very great, and we appreciate it. And then to thank Lizette, you've done wonders for the community, and you will be definitely missed.
Mr. Boski?
Two things. Somebody asked me if we could speak up into these things they can't hear when they're on the TV. They'd like to hear it. They have to prop up their TVs, and they still can't hear. I don't know if there's anything we can do to adjust that.
I don't know. We can look into it.
The second thing is, if anybody's noticed, there's a sign on the back of a chair. Bob was saying years ago, the lady that was mayor had left and promised her chair. So I bought him a sign to put on his chair for forty-seven years of sitting there. So, he's got his own, that's his chair.
Mr. Schmansky?
I'd just like to thank everyone in the city for all the hard work this past year, and again, thanks Salt City Rockin' Blues for spearheading the project. I think it's gonna be something that'll be really valuable for the city if we can get it off, off the ground and get it started. And then, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Lizette for the year that she's been here. It doesn't seem like a year, but it's a year already. Thank her for her time and talent, and thank the guests, people that just gave us ten thousand dollars. That's my bonus.
Ms. Beaton?
We're gonna miss you, Lizette. I wish we could keep you.
I'll miss you all.
Really, really do. I'm glad you're gonna be here for a couple more months. And I just think you've been a great asset, and you did expose a lot of things that needed to come to the surface. It was a little bit painful, but I think we need to work on those still. That being said, that leads into my next topic. Where do we go now with the DDA? They have not approved, they have not... They, they have a copy of the services agreement with the city, but they didn't act on it at their last DDA meeting. I was rather hoping that they actually call a special meeting for the year, but apparently they're not doing that.
I don't, there's none by the end of the year that I'm aware of. I did strongly encourage the DDA board that they needed to have the services agreement approved at the board level so it could be presented to council at the second meeting in February, or in January. So I told them if it takes multiple special meetings, we need to do that, because we just, we don't have time to waste.
Okay, and then, once they approve it and we get it, what is our timeline with that?
We have, the treasury says that, that our TIF plan is good through sometime into the, towards the end of March.
Okay.
And that's what we're focusing on, you know, internally, we feel it might be through the end of our fiscal year, so we gotta get that discrepancy taken care of, but minimally through, through the latter part of March.
Okay, well, I hope they take it seriously because I'm feeling a little bit pressured to approve something that, not all pieces of it, I do approve.
Okay.
I don't wanna be pushed up against the wall to approve a TIF plan when, in my heart, there's just things I can't support in it. It's important that we, I, it was up.
We'd like to have it early enough to read it.
Well, we do have it, but they, they need to make sure, for example, the services agreement matches what's in the TIF plan that they presented. All right, well, just, just, I appreciate the fact that you're on, on the board, Mr. Taylor. I feel very confident that you're constantly reminding them of what their diligence should be. So I just wanted to give you a plug for that, for your year-end. You didn't put it in your report that you're on the board, but I know it's time-consuming, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have nothing?
No.
I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I wanna thank for the ten thousand dollar donation. I was kind of disappointed that my name was not first on the check, but that'll, I'll get by with that. I, I wanna thank everybody for the past year and all the hard work. Lizette, you've opened a lot of eyes in this community. You know, there's some things that happen in life that you remember for a day or a week, and there are some things that happen that you remember for the rest of your life. You are one of those things for me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
You're much appreciated. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. With that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion?
Adjourn.